Okay. Welcome to the Elyria City School District Board of Education meeting for May 5th, 2021. I now call this meeting to order. Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Karstoffen.
Present.
Mr. Bax.
Here.
Mr. Elick.
Here.
Mr. Gebhardt.
Present.
And Mrs. Segwin.
Here.
Thank you. As soon as the Madam Treasurer has a moment to show us the flag, I would ask that everyone please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all. Thank you. At this time, I would like to introduce my fellow board members. We have Board Member Greg Elick. Board Member Mike Gebhardt. Board Member Elaine Segwin.
Hello.
Thank you. Vice President Jim Bex. And I'm your President Anne Karstoffen. We have our Treasurer, Mrs. Joy Cliquencher. And we have our Superintendent Antlos. Alrighty. Thank you so much. Alrighty, after the introductions, do we have any board recognitions tonight?
No, we don't.
No board recognition? Presentations. Madam Treasurer, would you like to have introductions of the presentations?
Yes, I would. I'd like to introduce Mr. Jake Altman. He is the Northeast Regional Liaison with the Ohio Auditor of State Keith Faber's office. And let me make sure we've got him unmuted here.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Thank you, Jake.
Excellent. My camera's not working for some reason, so you're spared from seeing my mug today. But I'm happy to be here on behalf of Auditor of State Keith Faber to present the Elyria City School District with the Auditor of State Award with Distinction. We audit over 6,000 entities across the state. And it changes from year to year, but less than 5% of them typically receive this award. And what it tells us when you receive this award, and especially when you receive it consistently, as the school district seems to have done, is that everybody at the district is pulling together from the board, the administration, parents, teachers, volunteers, everybody who's a part of this process is just pulling for fiscal excellence and for, you know, keeping track of every dime that's being spent on behalf of the taxpayers of Elyria. And it especially speaks to the professionalism and to the leadership of Ms. Cliquencher and her team and the work that they do. So on behalf of Auditor of State Keith Faber, congratulations on a job well done.
Thank you. And I would, thank you. I would like to just recognize two of my staff members that are here tonight. Anne Holton, my assistant. There she is. And MJ, my MJ LaFleur, my payroll person. And I, my other two, one had a death in the family and the other one just texted that she has car troubles. So otherwise, they would have all been here. But I can't tell you how proud I am of all the work, hard work that they do and of exactly what Jake said, everybody pulling together. And we couldn't do it on our own, clearly. But my staff has a good handle on keeping things straight, narrow, and clean. And that's the way I like it. So.
Thank you. Wow.
Congratulations.
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 Yes.
Thank you.
We're very proud, very, very proud of you. We know that this takes a lot of hard work and dedication and commitment from everyone involved. And we appreciate you. We definitely appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes. Any other board members would like to have a comment?
Well, I'd just say this, that I've been involved with audits for a long time. And, you know, you could have some things out of your control, something you're not aware of come up. And, you know, you're probably not going to get this award. So it does show how dedicated the team is, her team, Anne's team, everybody is with this. So the board is very appreciative. So congratulations and good work.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Okay. Moving on, are we moving on? Moving on to Board Member Discuss, well, no, we have visitors' comments.
Yes, we do.
Yes, we have a visitor tonight. Alrighty, we have an Elyria High School student. We have a high school student, Aiden, is that pronounced right, Aiden? Aiden Pol. And he wants to speak with us tonight. He will be making a presentation about Black Lives Matter, about a monument for the school and the community. We would like to hear from Aiden at this time.
Hi, guys. Thank you.
Welcome, Aiden.
I wasn't able to come like a couple of weeks ago because I had a dentist appointment. No fun. But I appreciate you guys bringing me in here and letting me speak. But yeah, so I'm Aiden. I'm a junior at the high school. I'm involved a lot at the high school, trap, cross-country, bunches of different clubs. But I'm also part of the Lorraine County Community Foundation of the Youth Fund. I'm vice president of it. So I'm really involved in a lot with our community in Elyria and Lorraine County. So, but I just wanted to come to you guys and talk to you guys about making something involving students from grades K through 12, just kind of bringing us, community together. You know, as we know, 2020 was just a year of like racial inequality, COVID, non-society really, just with COVID, everything shutting down. But what really brought us all together was, I believe, was us humans, just being able to connect with our families at home, just taking advantage of different things that we were like, hey, let's go do a party. Or like, let's have these people over, but we can't, so, because of COVID. But we've, in America, we've always, always, from the beginning, always suffered from some form of racial inequality, from African-Americans to Indians, always. We've always had that. But this is not just stemmed from race. It also stems from different beliefs that people have. But I wanted to bring up Black Lives Matter. It has been a big topic in 2020. Yes, some people may think it is negative for them, but it brings all of us together as humanity because we are protecting other humans that don't exactly look like us. But at the end of the day, we walk and talk like humans. So. But as like a thank you for the people that have fought for racial equality in the country. For example, Martin Luther King, Ruth Bader Ginsburg, different people that have always been examples of a form of equality for America. I wanted to create a Black Lives Matter movement right outside of Middle Avenue on, in front of Elyria, the high school. So with the help of you guys having like a step forward in this, I would love to bring this to the Elyria City Council to make this happen. But like I said before, I want this to be as a student thing. I don't, this is, this is to bring all students and youth voices together because I believe that the youth do not have a lot of say in different big things. So, yeah. But like when I had this idea, I always have said to people like, from the angels of Trayvon Martin, Breonna Taylor, George Floyd, Dr. King, Ruth Bader Ginsburg, and the red birds that fly over Ohio, and the angels in heaven that have seen what has been going down upon on earth, for them to see something like this, for the youth and for people who have died of racial inequality to see this just gives us, just gives them and us here a little bit more hope. So I know we are a small town in Elyria, like Elyria. We're just a little small town in this little country. But I really wanted to do this. So Ms. Trump, her husband, I'm really close with her. Her husband created a little graphic design. If I could share my screen to the, to you guys. I have a picture of what an idea might look like. If I'm able to, am I able to do that?
Try it. I think I've just given you access, but. Alright, let me see. There you go.
Can you see my screen?
We, it is your screen, but all we're seeing is a plus. Your cursor, basically.
Oh.
But it does say you are viewing Aiden Pol's screen.
You know what? I printed it out, so maybe you guys can see it.
There you go.
So smart.
Good backup. Good backup plan.
Okay, so I'm sorry about this. Okay. So if I'll just show it for a couple of seconds. Okay. So, okay, sorry about that. So her husband took Cincinnati's Black Lives Matter and literally just copied and pasted it into this. But I just really wanted to take something like in Elyria to have it there. But I also don't want this just to be like only a couple of students. So I've also wanted to see about taking, you know, that medium thing in the middle of Middle Avenue when you're driving with the lights. Well, in Lorraine with the graduates, they like had these like pictures of them, like banners off the lights. And I wanted students to also create like a portrait of like a person who has helped racial equality. And like, so we can print it and put it on there. So. But I also don't want any funding from you guys, meaning like nothing, not a single penny. I want the community to also help fundraise it. I've talked to the Community Foundation and we're still in the talking process if this does work out to give us some money to do it. But yeah, so that's my idea. Do you guys have any questions?
Well, first of all, I did have a question before hearing your speech. I wanted to know how were you planning to fund your project? But you've answered that question. But second of all, I personally would like to say that I applaud your bravery because it takes bravery and courage. One, you know, sometimes we see things, but we don't always act upon it. And to speak of a person, the forerunner of Dr. Martin Luther King, which was Dr. Vernon Johns, who said that when you see a good fight, get in it. And I think that's the philosophy that I live by, when you see a good fight, get in it. So I want to applaud your bravery and say, I can't speak for a board member, but I just, I just think you're awesome. I think what you're doing is awesome. I think the personality in which you are delivering your objective or your spiel is just awesome. I wish you the best. Yes.
But I just really, like, I know that there's so much negativity behind this with like different political standards or something. But like I said, at the end of the day, we're human and we have to come together somehow and hold hands because there's never going to be like a good fight without, you know, like peace and love. And, you know, it's just really sad to me that we still have this here in such a great country, not just with Black Lives Matter movement, but from LGBTQ rights, from Asian-American rights. It's just really, it really, personally, it really hurts me as a youth in the community and living in this country to see what kind of presence people have made these certain things like Black Lives Matter movement. Because I do know that some people think it's such a negative thing, and it's not. We have to come together. So.
Aiden, let me say, let me, let me say this here. I definitely applaud you and commend you for coming in front of us. And it seems like you're definitely at a young age dedicating your life to helping people and trying to get hate out of the world. And anytime you do that, obviously, I think you're going to make this a better place. And there's a lot of causes, it seems like, that you're interested in helping. I will make one recommendation, though. It looked like your mural that you wanted to paint was on the street in front of the high school there. I do think maybe you may want to touch base with the city. I don't think we would have any say on painting murals. We do have a former board member that's involved with the city. But you may want to try them and see how that goes. Because I'll be honest with you, I have no idea if the city will permit that or allow that. But you may want to make that your next stop along the way. But I do applaud you for, you know, getting involved and trying to make the world a better place.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions from any other board members or any other comments?
No.
None?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Aiden.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And please stay in contact with us and let us know how it's going.
I will. I just wanted your guys' opinion approval, just so I can go to the city and just kind of say like I have talked to the board and so. But I really appreciate you guys listening and hearing me, and it means a lot to me. It really does. Like this, best thing of my day today. I admitted it's not more than that.
Wonderful.
Good luck.
Very nice. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Aiden.
Alrighty. Okay. Next, Board Member Discussion Items. Do we have any discussion items? Oh, I think I do. I would just like to say that the Lorraine County JVS, we had a board retreat on April 17th. And the narrator or the host was Steve Horton from OSBA. And that was on April 17th. And also, the save the date for the senior recognition ceremony is April, I'm sorry, is May 21st. And that is at Black River Landing at 11 o'clock. And usually, our superintendent is there because we have students from Elyria City Schools that will be there on that day. And hopefully, I will be able to attend as well. Okay?
Cool.
Yeah, I have a, I have a question on board discussion. You know, I've got three texts today about some school that basically is getting rid of the mask requirement in the schools and asking me, when is Elyria doing that? So I just thought I'd bring that up. Because I'll be honest with you, I don't even know what school it was, what happened. But boy, people were fast to let me know that this is out there. So I was just curious with our superintendent, are we continuing to be on top of this and?
Yes. Yes. So we meet weekly still with Dave Cavell, the police, or not Police Commissioner, the Health Commissioner. And at this point, the orders have not been lifted. And we're continuing to maintain our stance and trying to keep everyone as safe as possible. But, you know, if there is a change, he really doesn't see a change between now and the end of the year. I mean, we really only have, what, about six weeks left? He is saying things like he, he's pretty sure next year, there's a good chance we could come back, you know, five days a week, no mask, which is wonderful to hear. But at this point, nothing with the mask restrictions has been lifted in Lorraine County based on what he has been communicating.
I just thought I'd forward that along. Thanks.
Yes, I've seen it too. Yeah.
Okay.
Alrighty. Thank you. Nothing else? The meeting minutes. The minutes have been posted. Hopefully, you've had the opportunity to review them. Could I, I will now entertain a motion to approve the Board of Education records proceeding for the meeting of April 21st, 2021 as detail in enclosure F1. May I please have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Greg Elick and second by Mr. Mike Gebhardt. Thank you. Are there any questions? No questions. Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Elick.
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt.
Aye.
Mr. Bax.
Yes.
Mrs. Segwin. Mrs. Segwin.
Aye.
And Ms. Karstoffen.
Aye. Thank you. Motion carries. Moving on to G, which is Treasurer Action Items. Madam Treasurer?
Okay, the only action item I have tonight is to approve the attached list of purchase orders. There's only one, in order to comply with our purchasing procedures.
Thank you. May I please have a motion to approve the recommended Treasurer Action Items?
Move to approve.
Move by Mr. Bax. May I please have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gebhardt. Are there any questions? Madam Treasurer? Okay, go ahead.
Why are we late on this?
We're not late. We're not late. This one was over and it's about tuition. And we're never sure how much, how many days kids are going to attend these out-of-your-school district placements. So this one just came in higher than what was expected when we put the purchase order out three months ago.
So the PO is for an estimate? So, but we still, the state requires us to do it this way?
No, actually, this is our board policy. So if you would like to change that, we can.
All right. Well, I guess there's probably bigger fish to fry at this point. When you have POs that aren't, that the board has to view and this, it just, I don't know, for these amounts. I mean, we've got the award-winning treasurer here. Why do we have to spend time on these things? But that's fine. I'm good.
Or if you would like, I'll look into it and bring you back a recommendation of a revised policy. How about that?
Yeah.
Because I'd prefer, I'd prefer not to do them either. So.
Yeah. Now, I could see if it were a big one that was up, but if it's an estimate or it's a little bit late, you know what I mean? So.
Okay.
So Joy, we would have these arrangements with other neighboring counties with their ESCs?
Actually, this one, and Denise might be able to address it better than me. But this one is to, yeah, the Educational Service Center, but it's for the PEP program. So it's a matter of how many students actually go, how many we refer to there, how many days they go once they are, you know, referred to there. So.
That's correct. So when we have kids that move into the district that are court placed or already placed at a separate facility, by law, IDEA, who protects and services children with disabilities, they have a policy, it's called a stay-put law. So we can't just move them into one of our buildings. We have to continue to place them at an outside facility. And this year, we did see an increase in those type of placements.
Thank you, Denise.
Yep.
Thank you so much for clarification. If there are no other questions, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Bax.
Yes.
Mr. Gebhardt.
Aye.
Mr. Elick.
Aye.
Mrs. Segwin.
Aye.
And Ms. Karstoffen.
Aye. Thank you. Motion carries. Moving on to Treasurer's report.
Well, just another software update because we are still plugging along on the new release. But we did get a payroll out, which we were very excited about. And we also balanced out the month. So everything is looking good. Everything's more of a chore now because it's new. We have to look it up. We have to, but it is, it's moving right along. So I just want to comment on that.
Very good.
OFCC.
The only thing we have is an amendment, and it's listed there on your agenda. There's, there's a lot of paperwork with it. But if you boil it all down, it comes down to the OFCC or the state has given us the permission to use Crestwood and Westwood abatement and demolition dollars in our regular project. So it's, there's no dollar change. It's just a matter of where they're allowing us to spend it.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from any other board members regarding that?
I'm sure we have some dollars coming also. What about like McKinley? What about those abatement dollars?
Those were, those were already approved. When they approved the group of them, they happened to leave off Crestwood and Westwood. And we believe it was because they were not in the city, they were in the township. And, and now we're just getting, getting all of that squared away. But we've already done all the rest of them.
Great. Okay, thanks.
Alrighty. Okay. Then I would like a motion then to approve the OFCC, correct? Or no motion? Yes, a motion to approve the OFCC, OF, OSFC in the sports complex.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Elick. May I please have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Elaine. No other questions? Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll? Because I don't think we had a motion.
Correct. Mr. Elick.
Aye.
Mrs. Segwin.
Aye.
Mr. Bax.
Yes.
Mr. Gebhardt.
Aye.
And Ms. Karstoffen.
Aye. Thank you. Moving on to K. Yay. Superintendent Action Items.
I'll take that as you're excited. It's me, right? So first, thank you, Madam President. First, to approve the district's gifted identification plan as required annually from the Ohio Department of Education. And that is all I have under Action Items.
Okay. Thank you. May I please have a motion to approve the items recommended by the superintendent as presented?
Move to approve.
Move by Mr. Jim Bax. May I please have a second?
Second.
Second by Mike Gebhardt. Any questions? No questions? Thank you. Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Bax.
Yes.
Mr. Gebhardt.
Aye.
Mr. Elick.
Aye.
Ms. Segwin.
Aye.
And Ms. Karstoffen.
Aye. Thank you. Motion carries. Personnel actions recommended by the superintendent.
Yes, thank you. First of all, to approve the retirement of a certified staff as detailed below. Anna Beltran, she's one of our occupational therapists, and she's been here for 17 years. Also, to approve the unpaid leave of absence for the following certified staff. To approve the following payment for work, on work rental events during the 2021 school year. We're going to be seeing some rentals. We've started to open some of that up per the Health Department, so we needed some additional workers just to cover if others couldn't be available. To approve the resignation of the following classified staff members. To approve the resignation agreement between the board and Ms. Virginia Tipton. To approve the appointment of the following classified staff as detailed below. To approve the unpaid leave of absences of the following classified staff. And that concludes my personnel items.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. May I please have a motion by a board member to approve the personnel items as recommended by the superintendent as presented?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Elick. May I please have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Gebhardt. Are there any questions? No questions. Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Elick.
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt.
Aye.
Mr. Bax. Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mrs. Segwin?
Aye.
And Ms. Karstarfen?
Aye, thank you. Motion carries. Um, superintendent's report. Do you have a report for us this evening?
Yes, just a few announcements. First of all, I was at the National Honor Society induction on Monday. It was, uh, a, a great event. We had, um, many juniors and seniors that, that met all the, the requirements and, and many parents, proud parents there. Um, also this Thursday is Scholastic E. Um, it's going to be done a little bit differently. Uh, we can't have a big banquet as we usually do and, and we're doing it in two sections. But we are still doing it this year. Unfortunately, last year we were unable. Um, and then, um, big shout out to the, um, Mr. Graves, Ms. Bonzio, and the Barants. From, uh, this past weekend, there was a musical, kind of gala where they, they sang and played and, and it was really cool. Um, really neat announcement, coming up on May 15th, our prom is going to happen. And it's going to be at the stadium. So kind of a new, unique idea. We wanted the students to be able to dance. We weren't sure if they were going to open it up. Um, the backup plan is to, to have it inside the two gyms. But they're going to have what's called a red carpet event. They've sold, um, about 300 tickets, I believe. And, uh, kudos to Mr. Brown, the senior class officers, and Mrs. Anderly, and, uh, just a lot of the staff at the high school for just making this a, a special event. Also to Aramark, who did, uh, taste testing and is going out of their way to, to make it a nice banquet-type um, dinner for the, the students attending.
That's nice.
Also would like to extend also to join the treasurer's office. I can, I can tell you firsthand, um, that they're, they're extremely efficient, hardworking, and, and do a great job and great to work with, so wanted to put that in there. Also, Monday, um, if you're so inclined, around 3:45, you might be able to catch a couple of us at the State Board of Education meeting presenting. Um, I, as you know, I'm on the advisory committee with Paulo, Superintendent Paulo Di Maria, um, on equity. And, um, he liked a lot of the things he was hearing. And Natalie Matthews, myself, will be presenting some of the overview, just a short, um, 15-minute presentation and then Q and A from the State Board of Education on what we're doing in Elyria to, um, on, on the topic of equity. Um, and, um, we've been, you know, talking about doing a presentation for you. We were trying to wait until we could do it in person because we thought it would be much better in person so that we could have some of the staff members there too and, and show you. But, um, we can always modify it, but that's why we haven't done it with you yet. This'll just be an overview, but we, we are honored that we were chosen. Um, it says a lot for the work our staff is doing and, uh, really excited. It'll be taped too, so we'll send that out. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Uh, Board of Educations, anything from any board members?
I just, uh, I saw the, uh, the ma, the masks that you guys made, or I thought that was really a great idea. They're really nice.
Yeah.
Yeah, those were nice.
That, um, that goes to the high school, Mr. Brown and all of them. Um, I think, you know, we'll have ours as supporters and the, all the students, it'll look really, really neat in their, in their garb and everything. And great ideas coming out of a high school to support the students.
Thank you. Thank you. All righty. Um, nothing else? No executive session? Um, at this time, if there's nothing else to come before the board, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I beat you.
You beat, he still got you. Motion by Mr. Elick. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Jim Bax. You missed a second, Mike.
Where did he get second, Gethardt?
Uh, he jumped on that so fast, Annie, you didn't hear him.
Okay. Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Gethardt?
Aye.
Mrs. Segwin?
Aye.
And Ms. Karstarfen?
Aye, thank you. Consider yourself adjourned. Thank you so much.
Thank you.